Public hearings.
Thank you. So a couple of things that we, we, we want to make sure clear for those for the recording purposes, we did a roll call and we opened the public for comments not on the agenda. And we're on the public hearing comment, public hearing of item three on the review draft housing element. Let me do a quick overview of how, how we're going to handle the, the conversation on this. One will start with an overview by our planning staff, Lisa Costa Sanders will give us an overview of the elements of this, of what's before us. And we'll go ahead and then open it up for, for public comment. And we'll, we'll limit it to three minutes so we can get as many people in as possible. And also we're looking for any follow on comments through email as we possibly can get. I just want to make sure that we understand that. And we want to clear that we didn't initiate the need for these changes, the town housing plan, not the commission, not the town council and not planning staff. All these meetings that we have are being held to work out the best approach to apply with a state requirements. And nothing is going to be approved today. This, this format is just to be heard and to go on record, one, so the state can hear feedback. And two, so that we can provide a plan that'll eventually be accepted by the state as compliant, but still leave us with the community you want to have. There, there. We want to make sure that while we were, while we hear the ideas and thoughts that we today, we're also maintaining the actors in character going forward. The state planning targets have been mandated and we're definitely not alone in our surprise and disappointment with the direction in terms of density requirements. Although these targets are working from, aren't working for many communities, several of the planning cycles that are ahead of us, particularly down in Los Angeles area, have been submitted already of the over 125 plans have been submitted in Southern California, either in LA or Orange Counties. Fewer than 10 plans have been accepted. So there's like over 115 communities that are still trying to rework their plan to comply. So there's definitely a lot of concern among a number of communities about these stated planned directions. We want to, in addition, the state has established an oversight agency as a watchdog to make sure, one, the plan is truly compliant and it's, and it's worked out. Our job, all of us is today, is to make sure we have a better understanding of how we can do two things. We have to develop something that gets this within the state framework and is accepted because if we're not accepted, they'll come in and help us plan. And it doesn't ruin the character of our budget. What we want to do is make sure that we submit a plan by the, the target right now is by the end of July to the state. They have 90 days to give us feedback. That if they took the entire 90 days, we would have the feedback on the plan to us by October. That would mean that we would have between October and the end of the year to resubmit a plan that was accepted. So the timeline you had is, is the rest of the year. And what we have to do is figure out a way for all of us to work together for a solution for the plan when we, I think we can do it. I think we can come up with something that meets the criteria for the state in a different way than maybe the state directed. And also leave us with the, with these, the town we want. Couple of things I did want to highlight, there have been some questions about the public nature of this process. And our city manager provided me some overview of the dates. So there have been 10, this is the 10th meeting on this subject over the last year and a half. October, April 28th to 2021, we had a joint meeting with the town council, the planning commission did a town council to go over the, the coming requirements as they were being firmed up and as they were being talked to us about what would presumably be the requirements. Then on January 12th, the city council met with a public hearing to go over the elements of the plan and looking at some different concepts and tried to narrow down some of the concepts that they thought should be the direction the town takes. On February 24th, there was another council meeting where there was revisions presented by staff. And then those revisions were talked about and reviewed and, and then more of a discussion was held on March 16th in preparation for the April 26th community outreach meeting. So all the three meetings that the, the town council had that were to make sure that where they were reshaping the choices so that it, it was narrowing the options that they were interested in pursuing information about, not to approve, but to understand more about the options. On April 26th, several of us were at the community outreach meeting. I was there along with the mayor and the, and the planning staff along with 70 or more people just reviewing the, the plans, options and considering what the, what the reason for this change was as well as some of the restrictions or requirements around it. Then on May 18th, the city, the city council had another housing strategy meeting and they refined the plant, the concept and narrowed down some of the options and also directed staff to do some follow up. Then on May 24th, there was a, another special meeting and there was, there was more direction and more discussion around some of the options. Then on June 10th, there was a draft housing element published. And then June 15th, the city council once again met to discuss the options and also talk about the feedback they were getting about some of the, the options. And then today, we're having our planning commission meeting where we do the same type of thing. Going forward, there's at least a city council meeting on the 20th scheduled as well as a special meeting on the 27th where they're hoping to be able to submit the outline of our plan to the state so the state can give us feedback. So one, I want you to make sure you understand we are not done with the public input and we're looking for a lot more. And it's important that we get it so that we, we can shape this to again comply and keep us, keep the town we want. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Lisa Costa Sanders to give us an overview of the elements that we're going to be discussing. Give us a little bit more history on what's gone on in the process. Definitely she's been heavily involved with it and to get us to the next phase of taking more public input. So Lisa, it's all yours.
Thank you. Can you see the presentation?
I can. People are shaking their head yes, so that's a good sign.
Thank you. Um, so good evening, good afternoon. Lisa Costa Sanders, Town Planner. The purpose of the meeting today is to provide the planning commission with an overview of the draft housing element. Receive comments from the commission as well as receive public comments. And if I could just make another statement here, what we'll be doing is hearing your comments this evening, we're going to be tracking all of those comments. We have a spreadsheet where we're listing every comment that's been received. And we'll be providing all of that information on our website as well as to the city council and the planning commission. We may not respond to your comment because it is something that we may need to look into or obtain direction on how we want to proceed. But we will be receiving all the comments and we'll be, we will be tracking all of them. So I just wanted to assure you of that. So just for a little bit of background, all California cities are required to accommodate their fair share of regional housing needs as determined by the state and through ABA, which is our regional planning association. The housing element update covers an eight-year planning period from 2023 to 2031. And the town's draft housing element update was made available for public review and comment for a 30-day period starting on June 10th. That's available on the town's website. The housing allocation needs for this planning cycle is a total of 348 units and is divided into different income categories. Just to give you some context, that's a substantial increase from the last housing element cycle where the requirement was for 93 housing units. And these are net new housing units that the town needs to plan for. The town does not build, that's up to the private market to build, but we need to show that we can plan for and we can accommodate that many net new housing units. So how is the town planning to achieve that? We have a few programs that we've established. One is through production of accessory dwelling units. Another is with multifamily housing at school sites as well as the Bear Gulch Reservoir. Lot splits that are developed under the new state law known as SB nine and a new townhouse overlay zone. And I'll walk through each of those strategies. So first for accessory dwelling units, we're planning for the development of 35 new accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units per year during the housing element cycle for a total of 280 new units. We're assuming an affordability based on a study that was completed by the state as well as UC Berkeley that has a split on what these units typically rent at. So it's 30% very low, 30% low, 30% moderate, 10% above moderate. So this is a great way to really achieve the majority of our housing production and especially in the different income categories. One of the concerns we're seeing from comments that the HCD is providing to other jurisdictions is, okay, well, we see you're building these units, but are they actually being rented? So we've added a new strategy in this housing element to further encourage the rental of the units. We're going to partner with a local nonprofit organization to assist us in matching property owners with interested renters and kind of facilitate that process a bit more as well as do a survey and an inventory of all ADUs and even guest houses. So it could be that you have a guest house on your property and you didn't realize that you can rent it out as an accessory dwelling unit because the town had a limitation of no more than 30 days a year. So we're going to establish a new policy where we do more outreach to the community and let them know that these accessory dwelling units can be rented. And then we'll show HCD that these are viable housing units that the town can count. The next would be looking at multifamily housing at school sites as well as the Bear Gulch Reservoir site at Cal Water. Historically, teacher housing has been allowed at the private schools. It does require a conditional use permit under the PFS zoning district. There are a few faculty units at Menlo College as well as Menlo School. And Menlo School also owns some off-site units. Sacred Heart has some housing for its nuns on the property. So we've spoken with those schools and they are interested in adding more housing. But they noted that there may be a need to amend some of the setback and height limits to accommodate the housing development on their campus. There was also interest in possibly acquiring adjacent property by the public, by, excuse me, the private schools. And if they were to do that, then we can expand that PFS zoning designation to allow them to build multifamily housing for their faculty on an adjacent site. And then in addition, we spoke with Cal Water and they noted that there's an issue with retaining and hiring new employees because of the high cost of housing. And so they have interest in adding additional housing units for their employees only, this wouldn't be for the general public on their property. And so we would amend the zoning code to allow that as well. Next strategy is if you're familiar with California State Senate Bill SB nine, it permits the splitting of a single family lot into two parcels and the construction of up to two dwelling units on each new parcel. So the town adopted implementing regulations to encourage new development to comply with our current development standards. The town estimates a total of 80 new housing units from SB nine projects over the next eight years. And we've already seen a lot of really good interest in developing under this SB nine where somebody would purchase a single family property, tear down that existing residence or even retain it, split the lot and then build a net new three units. So we see we could get pretty good production out of this and it's a state law. So it's something that we're required to implement. And this is the area that you could just see where we've received some applications and also where we've received some interest in property owners and doing those lot splits. So it's somewhat spread out throughout town. Okay. And then the next item, as indicated, we're, we're kind of tracking those letters that are going down Southern California communities. And a few of the communities submitted housing elements that showed they could comply with, like we're doing, the ADUs and some other programs without doing any multifamily zoning. And all of those were rejected with very strong comment letters from HCD. And so one of their concerns is that we're not affirmatively furthering fair housing and we're not providing a variety of housing choices. So it's unlikely HCD will support the town's housing element without some multifamily housing. The council has considered, studied various maps, looked at numerous properties, council members individually drove around the town, really took a deep study of different locations where it would be appropriate to put this town home overlay. And they're looking at rezoning properties to allow six to 16 dwelling units per acre. So if you had a one acre site and it was zoned at six dwelling units, you could have six units on that, 16 again, do the math. As an overlay, we would allow that single family home to remain as a permitted use. So if you wanted to retain that home and not development in the immediate time, feel free to do so. It's permitted, it's not non-conforming or illegal. But property owners would also have the option to construct multifamily housing units up to the permitted density. They don't have to build it, it's a choice. And then a portion of the new units would be restricted as affordable housing. And we're currently doing an analysis to create that in what we call an inclusionary ordinance for that affordable housing. And this is the different properties that the city council has identified to consider for the town home overlay. We've got properties at 23 Oakwood. It's a 1.6 acre site and at 16 units for the acre, it would allow a total development capacity of 26 units. There's several properties along Bay, just under an acre, council direction to look at six units an acre for these properties. And then the four acre property at 170 Atherton Avenue, the council discussed up to eight units an acre. So that could generate a total of 32. Also property at 290 Polhemus, that's Polhemus of the corner of Alameda. Five unit property up to eight units an acre could generate 40 units as well. 97 Santiago, it's a 1.42 acre property at six units an acre would be nine units. We've received numerous public comments relating to all of these properties. A lot of neighbors and residents of the town expressing significant concern with how this could change the character of the community. Specifically on the 290 Polhemus site, what we need to show to HCD is that we have substantial evidence that these properties are likely to be developed during this cycle. As the property owner at 290 Polhemus has stated, their strong desire not to develop the property under this scenario, it's likely that that property would be removed from this list prior to submission to HCD because we're just not able to show HCD that it's likely that property would be developed. Alternatively, the Oakwood property and the Atherton Avenue property, there is some interest with the property owner as well as a developer to develop those sites. And it may not be to this maximum density that's allowed, it may be under that. And this is really not what communities and HCD would consider high density housing. This is really closer to the range that most communities see actually single family density. So if you look at communities near us, six and eight units an acre is what they have as single family. But in Atherton, it's what we're looking at to achieve some townhome development or more, you know, smaller clustered lot developments. And these are where those sites are all located. Okay. So when we discussed all of those strategies, here's our projections on how many units that we would be able to achieve in that next eight-year cycle. And it's assigned by the different income categories. So as I indicated, the ADUs, we're hoping to develop 280, the lot splits about 80. There's some vacant sites throughout town that somebody could develop a single family home on. So we've identified, you know, one or so a year, so we get 10 of those. The town home overlay, as I indicated, we're really kind of focused on two of those sites as more likely to develop during this eight-year cycle. So we've projected a total of 58 units. And then the school sites, possibly at Menlo College, possibly Menlo School acquiring property. And then at the Bear Gulch Reservoir site, so a total of 34 units. So that total is 462. And that does exceed our regional housing need allocation requirement. But HCD is asking all jurisdictions to plan for a buffer. And the reason for that is, well, what if we don't see 280 ADUs? What if we don't see, you know, the townhouse development like we're thinking, maybe they only build half of the units that we're projecting. So the HCD is saying you need to have a buffer in here where you plan for more than just your minimum units in case it's not developed to the maximum that's planned. And so that's what we are showing here. These are just all of the, the sites, when you take a look at the different multifamily, the school sites as well as the Cal Water potential development. So you see it's somewhat mixed throughout town. Okay. So as indicated, we have a 30-day comment, I'm sorry.
Lisa, can you go back to the map? We had a request to stay a little bit longer on the map so people get a chance to absorb it.
Sure. So at the top of the screen would be, you know, as you're heading towards 280, so that's the Bear Gulch Reservoir site. And then the next purple circle down would be the 290 Polhemus. And then down at the middle of the screen, you've got the Atherton Avenue property, lower right side would be 23 Oakwood. If you move over to the left, we've got the three red circles are the private school sites. Just above that, the purple circle would be the Santiago site. And then the very bottom of your screen would be the Bay Road properties. Thank you.
Right. They stayed there for a minute so people get to sort of put that in their head, whatever way they, they see maps in their head, just a minute. All right. So. And then also you're, you're going to make your, your slides available on the link on the, on the, on the city, on the town site, correct?
Yes, we can post it on the, the town site. Yes.
Yeah, we had a request for that too. I want to make sure. This will help, this will help the communication a lot, I think.
Certainly.
All right. Thank you.
And then I just had the, kind of the next steps here. So as I indicated, we're out for that 30-day comment period right now, started on June 30th, will end on July 11th. And at the end of the comment period, the town has 10 working days to consider the comments. And so as I indicated, we're going to be tabulating all the comments received, bringing those forward to the city council with some suggestions on how we might, you know, revise the element further to address some of the comments. The city council will review the comments at its July 20th meeting. And we've also scheduled a special meeting on July 27th. And then when the city council is so authorized, the town will transmit the draft housing element to the state. This is their preliminary review period. It's a new requirement that's been added and it gives the, the state 90 days to review and comment on the housing element. Once we receive those preliminary comments, we'll work on revisions and we're targeting for completion by the end of this year for state certification by January. But as the chair mentioned, it could take several iterations and we may not get it done on time, but we're certainly doing our part to achieve that goal.
All right.
That concludes staff's presentation. Yes.
Yeah. But there was a question, well, before we leave this area, there was a question on the map about what the yellow area was on the map.
That's the town is the single family zoning is yellow.
I think you were talking about the, I think we're talking about the darker yellow area.
The darker yellow down here is the R1B zoning district. The lighter yellow is the R1A. So this is our zoning map.
Okay. And for those of you that know, R1B is near the, near the, near the, near the town hall and the train station right in there where it's a little more dense housing, housing currently. And the rest is the, is the, is the density throughout the, throughout the community.
That's correct.
For those to, maybe, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, but I wanted to make sure we could get understanding if you went along.
Yeah, that concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to stop sharing, where's that button?
All right.
Happy to answer any questions from the commission. And then as I indicated, we'll be tracking all public comments and commissioner comments.
I have a few questions and someone can go ahead of me if they want to.
All right. You're, you're, you're on the phone and not on the camera, is that correct?
No, I'm on the camera and I hope I'm on the phone.
All right. Your camera turned off then.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Well, there you are. I see you. I see you now. I saw your phone and.
Can you hear me as well? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Um, so I have, you know, an overall, you've done a great presentation on, you know, segregating the different sections and so forth to meet this new statute and so forth. Is there a reason that we're going over 348 and now you want the buffer? But I mean, this is really, I have to say as a planning commissioner, this is quite sudden and jarring. And this is, I mean, I'm sure for the properties that you identified is quite challenging. And also with respect to the eight, eight-year build out, do we have developers? I've read some of the letters and so forth, maybe some interested parties. But, um, you know, a lot of the homeowners, obviously, you know, some of my constituents and neighbors are obviously concerned with this. This is a totally different change of character of Atherton. Also, as I've mentioned to the chair in the past and in previous meetings when I joined last year, that this, it was zoned, you know, with the founding fathers of just being, you know, just only single family housing. Obviously, you know, circumstances change, but, um, you know, adding this amount of density kind of artificially in these categories, low income, high income. I mean, is there any exceptions to the rule with some of these other jurisdictions? Like you, as you mentioned, there are multiple plans put forth and only 10 of them have been approved in Southern California and Orange County. Because when you mentioned we're going to have multiple iterations, I would think perhaps we would have multiple iterations.
Let's take, let's take a couple of your questions now before, I want to make sure we have questions answered the staff. And then we'll talk about then some of these comments we want to hear at the, at the end. But right now we're focused on the questions to staff to clarify things about the plan. All right. So Lisa, did you pick up some of the questions there?
Yeah. So I think one of the questions was the, the production numbers. So this is the 348 units is what's required by the state and it's required in those different income categories. There's been numerous appeals up to ABA, which is the regional body that reviews these for reduction of numbers or adjustments of the different income categories. And all of those have been denied except for a couple of situations was there was an actual error in calculation. Like there was a mathematical error or they had assumed a different land area or there was just some error. So other than that, there was no approval of request to, to adjust. And we're actually, you know, given the size of the community, but we're, we're much lower than other communities of similar size. And then I think I indicated why we're planning for the higher amount. We've, we've put the school site in there as a development opportunity for the last two housing cycles. So it's been 16 years that we've told the state, yes, those private schools are going to build something and they haven't yet. So I'm quite concerned that the state, you know, may reject this or even say, you know, maybe half. And then also with the ADUs, that's another area I'm concerned about with this high number that the state's saying, sure, people are building these ADUs and your guest houses, but are they actually renting them out? And so that's another area that might get reduced. I'm trying to remember what your other questions were. I'm sorry.
Just the change of character of the town in terms of zoning. We went from single family housing now to multifamily housing, townhomes, apartments. I mean, this is, this is quite a change for people who live in Atherton. Obviously, you know, times change, but is there any exception to the rule in terms of like, you know, that, that the town charter had indicated that this is the way that the, the town was set up? Is that will change character and that will need more police force, obviously.
Yeah, so.
Schools and so forth. I mean, this is, this is going to be, you know, if you have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's keep, let's keep the questions on this section. All right. So.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, HCD is really looking for, you know, all jurisdictions to provide this additional housing. And some new requirements are talking about affirmatively furthering fair housing. And so there's, there's a lot of jurisdictions that had kind of more exclusionary, you know, zoning requirements that didn't allow, similar to Atherton, right? The multifamily and some mixed use since some smaller developments. And that's an area that the state is targeting to say, you need to provide housing for, you know, different types of units and a bigger, a better variety and not just provide the larger estate properties. The, the scale and the, the density of the zoning is probably more similar, the six and eight unit an acre to what's surrounding the town center development right now with the R1B neighborhood. So it is a lower density of multifamily housing. And so it could be that like on a five acre property, it's more scattered where you don't have one big building in the middle, right? You have smaller units on the property, maybe 3,500 square feet as opposed to an 8,000 square foot residence. The, the 23 Oakwood at the 16 units an acre, that's, you know, more medium density. And so that's where it would more likely be, you know, a two or three story building that's. And so that's where it would more likely be, you know, a two or three story building that's has the attached units.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And for the record, I want to, for the record, I want to indicate that, uh, Commissioner Rancic is on the, uh, is on the call. I, I, I don't know that he was, I know earlier, but, um, Ms. Davis, can you add him to the, to the minutes as being here?
Yes.
All right. Um, Ren, Ren, did you have the questions of staff?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. Um, I, I've got a question about optimized. So I, I wasn't a fan of SB nine, uh, but I'm becoming more of a fan of it after this. Um, and, and the question I have is, uh, uh, one of the things that there's a concern about is how viable the, um, the SB, the eight, uh, ADU plan is. Uh, have we looked into the idea of offering, uh, like a limited time, um, uh, incentive for ADUs with, with the idea of like. For example, one of the things that, that, uh, I, I'm most in favor of is a lot splits on big lots. So if you have a three or four acre lot and you want to split it, you're still going to have high value homes on that property. It's still going to be in the character of the town. Um, and many people, um, may be interested in that kind of, uh, opportunity. Uh, and if they have an ado on a, on a four acre lot, it's not going to be a, a traffic problem like it would be if we come up with a, a sixteen unit plan on the corner. I understand the state is, um, is interested in getting a multifamily, but also if we hit our number through. Carrie, what I would call Atherton character, character, uh, consistent methodology, it gets us there too, at least partially. Have we looked at anything like that?
Um, we did talk to the council about reducing lot size. So coming down from the one acre minimum to a reduced area. And, um, I think the concern was that if we did that, we would still need to look at some level of multifamily housing. Um, and so I think the thought was let's.
Yeah, I, I.
You know, closer to the, the requirements and as opposed to going above and beyond too much.
All right. Well, uh, for what it's worth, I think some kind of an incentive on, uh, ADU, uh, production. Would, would be a change in our methodology for ADUs that may, might make our ADU number more believable. Uh, and so, and also with the run, runs the opportunity, or at least of keeping the character consistent, because people might just want to split and put two homes on it rather than. Rather than put six on, on one lot. So, uh, that would, what I'm looking at is providing, uh, what I would be looking at, and I would ask you that you look into this, that the idea of. Of doing what we can in anything but that density. And then I know we're going to get some kind of density element, uh, to be accepted. So if we minimize the need for that, I think that the, the pad thing will be, um, will be different. And I think ADUs and, and lot splits are much more acceptable as they did to the community. All right, uh, Harry, anything on this? Any questions? From staff to staff. Okay, great. And Nancy, any questions to staff? All right. So we're going to go ahead and then go ahead with the public comment section of the, uh, of it right now.
Uh, sure. I'm sorry, we didn't talk about this, but what might be efficient is if we just have all the public comments. And then staff can take some notes. And if you would like us to make any clarifying remarks at the end of that, we can do so rather than kind of respond as they go.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's, that's the only way we're going to get through this at, at any kind of, uh, same day possibility, uh, as we can. Um, and, uh, and, and there, one question came up with, can we cooperate with neighbor cities for our requirements? And the answer that we've been given repeatedly, I know, is no. We have to make it, we have to basically, uh, manage our own checkbook. So that's the answer on, on that from David Barca. Um, uh. And then I've got a request from Diane Howard to speak and the, and, uh.
Let's just go ahead. Let's just have everybody start. Let's go.
Yeah, let's go. All right. So I'll go ahead. I'm just looking through the list here to make sure I know who has come up. So I'm going to go ahead and start with the person that, uh, used the, uh, the, uh, the chat function first. And who, who, who's got the, who's, who's doing? Uh, Jacob, can you stop sharing? Jacob Garcia, can you stop?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, oh, that's, that is that our timer? Is that, that's what it looks like? Oh.
Yeah, that's our timer that I was setting up there.
All right, good. So we're going to have a three minute timer and I, I guess that's going to take up the whole screen, huh? Okay, all right. All right. Uh, there's no way to display that any other way, huh?
There may be, there may be settings within your, um, your window that you're looking at that allow you to look at all participants and the share screening. Um. But there's no way for me to adjust that for you from where I'm sitting and how I'm sharing my screen.
All right. Well, I'm worried that nobody, well, nobody will be able to see if people talk. So, uh, uh, Jake, what, what I need you to do is give, uh, is give me a, a, a one minute sign. So I can, uh, let people know whether they're on the phone or on the screen that they have one minute to talk. We have three minutes for each speaker, so I want to get started on doing that. But I also want everyone to know that we're interested in your feedback. So even if you don't get all your thoughts out in three minutes, we want your feedback. So provide them an email or carrier pigeon or whatever methodology you want to get it to us, but let's get it in. All right, with that.
Uh, through the chair.
Yeah.
Um, just for clarification, would you like me to share my screen to show the timer or just give you a heads up when?
Just, just give us a heads up one, one minute because I, I don't want the screen dominated by the, by the timer.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So Diane Howard, uh, how, let's start with you since you're the first one that they use the chat methodology. And.
Good afternoon, Chair Lane and fellow planning commissioners. My name is Diane Howard. I'm the immediate past mayor and current council member for the city of Redwood City. I'm here today to speak to your proposal for a multifamily overlay zoning change for twenty-three Oakwood Boulevard. I hope as you deliberate this possible change, you will strongly consider the testimony from the Redwood City neighborhood, which will be impacted. The impacts of this already dense area must be considered to ensure a win-win for both you and the neighbors living around this proposed project area. We know the job housing imbalance is a real difficult issue to tackle. I commend you for working on that and trying to help resolve this issue and being part of the solution. But I want to also know that, note that compatibility and cooperation with neighbors is just as important. We want it to be a win-win. So please consider my request for a healthy dialogue with the neighbors around this area. Before you move forward with a zoning change. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you for your succinctness. And thank you for showing up to, at your, not, not your own time being. Uh, uh, next, uh, next I got Kerrigan, uh, just, just as asked to speak, and I don't see on the screen, but I know I will in a minute.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, which I think are going to probably be for Lisa.
All right, well, uh, just for methodology, we'll take your questions. Lisa's not going to respond to them. All right.
Okay.
We'll respond to them later.
Yeah, just for the record. So, um, it looks like after reading the housing element where we're short. Is not in the upper income units, but in the lower income units. And the townhouses and the multi-zoning overlays aren't going to help us in that category. So my question to Lisa and I guess the planning department to be answered later is. Can we revisit, kind of back up a little bit and revisit some of the sites that were discussed? And I haven't really heard an answer to why they were taken off the table. For example, Gilmore House. Um, the future of Play School, which I was told by several council members, that person is thinking of retiring the person that runs that. And then that site would be available because they don't want to have a preschool in there anymore. And then the corporate yard. And then also too, we talked about several, to several council members about some areas around the new civic center. And what, what, what could be possible there for the very low and low income units? Which would help us get our numbers up because that could be an area where the state says you, you, you're below your numbers in these areas. So.
Great. All right. Thank you. Uh, thank you for both, uh, uh, coming and also, uh, coming with, uh, with potential solutions and, and good questions. I appreciate that. Uh, Scott, Scott Wiley, I've got you up next.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Scott Wiley. I live at twenty-two Oakwood, which is across the street from twenty-three Oakwood, under discussion this afternoon. Um, a couple of points are important to my wife and I. Uh, one, the density that's proposed for twenty-three Oakwood sets in motion a series of events that are harmful. For the neighborhood as well as creating a level of traffic that is going to be burdensome, uh, to the existing Oakwood, uh, road. And will lead to spill over traffic onto Selby and onto the Oakwood Circle. We have some familiarity with that because we've seen the advent of cut through traffic and we will continue to see that grow and add to it. As a result of the twenty-three Oakwood development. It's not a good idea, uh, for Atherton. Uh, we believe that somewhere in the vicinity of ten units. Per acre is a reasonable target. It allows for some growth, uh, but it puts reasonable limits on top of it. Finally, there has been word of an economic study, uh, that was launched some time ago, uh, that takes a look at a variety of economic topics, including. The financial realities for a developer of a space like twenty-three. A, a question to Lisa, I guess. Wh- wh- when might we see that report? Do we have any updates?
Eric, you're on mute.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Scott, and we'll, we'll, we'll get an update on the economic, uh, from Elisa, uh, uh, later on. Uh, Jennifer Chung.
Hi, my name is, yes, I'm here. Thank you. My name is Jennifer Chung. I live at three, six, six East Oakwood. So I'm just over the line into Redwood City by a few lots. And I want to start first, Mr. Lane, by thanking you for such a well-run meeting and for welcoming all of us to have an opportunity to share our thoughts. Thank you. Um, in listening to all of us talking and your presentations, I keep thinking about Robert Frost's poem, Mending Wall. I'm sure most of you are familiar with it. It's about neighbors having their own sides, but also communicating and working together and being good neighbors. I urge all of us to be thinking about that poem. As we look at any of the development proposals that are on the border of any community. It isn't, it is necessary that we be respectful and care for each other. In all honesty, I think if we consider twenty-six homes at twenty-three Oakwood, that is not caring about our neighbors. And it would not be a healthy wall. I want to mention that those numbers are really dangerous. I commute that way every day. Uh, going to work in Atherton and, uh, as Mr. Wiley stated, the backup in the morning is bad. There are many, many children walking to Selby Lane School. There are many bicyclists going from Redwood City through Atherton to Stanford. There are pedestrians constantly there walking their dogs. And that egress would be right at a really tricky intersection, coming into the circle and then inserting another road into there. I think we are asking for a really dangerous, possibly tragic situation there. So I'm going to stop at that. I do want to mention that I hope that Atherton, if it considers a higher density housing at twenty-three Oakwood. Would also be respectful of height limitations such as those that are both in Redwood City and in Atherton. And thank you very much.
All right, Jennifer, thank you for coming and thank you for your comments and adding poetry to this meeting. That's always a nice touch. Um, and, uh, um, and so, just so you know, I've been on this commission for about ten years and the seven, and seven on another commission. And I have always talked about the number one job of, uh, of, uh, planning commissions is to make sure that we're reminding people how to be good neighbors. So I, I, I live that, uh, uh, since the eighties when I started being on planning commission. So thank you. Uh, Anush.
Yes.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Chair Lane. Um, thank you for, uh, having us here again. Echo Jennifer's comments. Really wonderful that you opened up the meeting for us as well. And I will not be as eloquent as Jennifer Norville. I have any poetry, so I'll try to make do here. Uh, so I live at three, four, three West Oakwood Boulevard, again in Redwood City, live here with my wife and two kids since twenty-fourteen. We've always loved living next to Atherton, um, find it to be a really great neighborhood for us to take our dogs into, take our, uh, kids into. Um, and they've all had great experiences. So I live within five hundred feet of the proposed development at twenty-three Oakwood Boulevard. I understand the state mandate and I absolutely agree with the push for more dense housing throughout the state to help alleviate what we know. To be housing burdens across the state in, in the Bay Area. And I guess I'm also here to express the concerns about that current proposal with respect to the Oakwood Boulevard, Oakwood Boulevard, um, uh, property. Of course, for the rest of the Atherton property and Atherton residents, I think it's more for the council and those residents to comment on. So again, for the twenty-three Oakwood Boulevard property, from my perspective, it seems like it's the only proposed property that's not directly on a major thoroughfare. All the rest, whether it's Alameda, Valparaiso, Atherton or Bay Road, always have a very nice, like busy street as an egress point. Except for this one, which as Jennifer had pointed to, is a really residential street. Um, it's also the one with the highest density. So of all the others being six or eight units per acre, we have a one with sixteen units per acre on the least busy street. The most residential street, that density has more than two times some of the other areas. Um, I think the impact it would have on Redwood City is really on the quality of life and safety. Um, as you all know, there's no lights at the corner of Selby and El Camino. And that directs a lot of traffic through the Oakwood Circle already. Um, we have no sidewalks. We have a lot of pedestrians, people walking their dogs, kids biking, as was mentioned, um, folks walking in the evening. And we've already seen complications with traffic in this area. And our feeling is that of twenty-six townhomes, likely fifty cars. With a very difficult egress point is likely to make it a much.
One minute remaining.
Situation.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we, uh, we just urge you to really look at the Redwood City resident impact. Um, I think we have only been recently brought into this process. We were only notified about ten days ago. So, uh, please ask you to take our, uh, input as well into that specific property. And if we feel that something has to be developed there, I would recommend an equitable approach that you're doing for the other properties. With a six unit per acre density, um, to be more in line with what you're doing in the rest of Atherton. So thank you for your time. Um, and I'll turn over to the everyone else.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Anush, for, for, uh, one showing up and two for your, uh, for your comments. I don't have other people who have, uh, asked to, to speak on the chat, but I see Francine is waiting.
Through the chair. Yes, I have a direct message from Francine Miltonberger, who would like to speak.
I see Francine's waving her hands and she's jumping, jumping up and down. So when she, when she takes herself off mute, I'll have her speak. There you go.
Hi, thank. Thank you, uh, Chair Lane and everybody from the planning commission. I also, uh, am a resident of the Oakwood. Uh, Boulevard neighborhood. I'm at three fifty-one, which is within the five hundred feet, uh, access. It's, I've been here since two thousand thirteen and within this neighborhood. There has been, um, an ongoing series of, um, uh, density, uh, projects here. Uh, quite a few single family properties have been converted into three, six, you know, unit, uh, properties. And it has contributed dramatically to the traffic and the parking challenges around the. Despite the fact that the developers, you know, put property, uh, put the right kind of, uh. Uh, garages, et cetera, in there. And so this is a neighborhood that has already experienced quite a bit of evolution. Uh, along this density curve. And so we're all really, really sensitive to this situation getting out of hand. Sixteen units per acre in, uh, that. In twenty-three is just mind-boggling, not only because of all the traffic issues that, uh, my other colleagues have commented on. But if you look at that piece of property, there is only one way in and one way out. And to have that kind of density is incredibly dangerous. I can't imagine that the fire and safety, uh, people would approve something like that. So my, my point of view here is not only do we want to be good neighbors, but we also have to put some parameters around. These density projects that, that account for the safety.
One minute remaining.
Safety factors. And, and clearly what is being proposed for twenty-three Oakwood is violating all of that.
Francine, thank you and thank you for, for waiting also. Um, and, uh, definitely you're, we're, we're, we're hearing your input very strongly. Appreciate that. Along with the seventeen emails we have from, uh, from, uh, people along Oakwood area. That we've received in the last twenty-four hours. And that's only part of the ones that we've received because the, the town council has received a bunch too. So, yeah, we're here, you know, we're hearing the, that, uh, that, uh, feedback dramatically. I just want to make sure for those of you who don't, uh, aren't able to see chat, uh, uh, on the side of the screen that, that, uh. Uh, Aaron Callahan, uh, Callahan, uh, brought up that, uh, in the early days of COVID, East Oakwood Boulevard was designated a safe street. brought up that the, in the early days of COVID, East Oakwood Boulevard was designated a safe street by Redwood City and closed to through traffic. And so that might be something else that we should understand about the neighborhood and its history. And uh, and, and also George Parsons agreed with the comments by Jennifer Anush and he's at 344 West Oak, Oakwood. So uh, Jake, I want to make sure somehow we capture these comments that are in the chat so they don't disappear. So if you could take periodic screenshots or whatever it takes to record these, so we want to make sure we, we get all this information. All right.
Yes, can do.
All right, great. Uh, and then Norm, did you have something? Did you want to speak to or not? Yeah, I see you brought up a comment, uh, uh, but do you want to speak?
Uh, yeah, just sure about the methodology that we're using in terms of number of units per acre or half acre.
Yeah, Norm, go ahead and introduce yourself to sort of your, where you're from.
Oh, hi, Norm Fogel Song. I live at 125 Alta Vista Drive in Atherton. Thank you. It looks like this plan would suggest we kind of spread all of this housing throughout town. And I'm wondering if we couldn't um, figure out how to deal with the periphery of town, wherever that might be. As opposed to spreading out all these solutions throughout the town. So we could preserve the character of the town. So I'm not quite sure what's being proposed along Highway 101, but it seems like some, some higher density apartment buildings there might solve a lot of this problem.
Uh, Atherton doesn't reach all the way to 101. So that's, that's part of the issue, but yeah, thank you for the comment. But uh, well, we'll also get back to you on, on the thinking around the choices. We'll have a further clarification on that. I'm not seeing any other requests and so I'm not seeing people jumping down, but down. Fran, Fran's time machine. I see you moving. So does that mean you want to speak? If you do, then take yourself off mute.
And uh, through the chair, I see that Lawrence has requested to speak in the chat and he also has his hand raised.
So Lawrence, you'll be up next after, after Fran.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, be sure to introduce yourself and explain that, that, that label.
You know what? I don't know how it got up there. My, my daughter just asked me the same question yesterday. Yeah, so I'm at 354 West Oakwood. And um, my grandparents bought that property, this property uh, in the early 30s. This was the country, you know, so for, you know, for, yeah, family's still here, my grandkids still and and note, and it's always been an escape from everything else, no matter where you were, what you, you turn on to Oakwood Boulevard and there we are, you know? And then the, and it's, it's getting smaller, I know, but just that feeling of uh, you know, the no sidewalks and everything and um, and this property used to be, it's a, it's a little over half acre now, 354. Um, it went all the way back to Roval when my grandparents bought it. But um, anyway, it's still country here and it's just um, I, I, the, the traffic, just the traffic alone with that many units. There and if they're going to be going this way and I'll bet eventually they'll want to put sidewalks in, it'll just totally ruin this whole neighborhood. Anyway, so that, that's, that's my, yeah, at least if they could just cut back on what they're going to develop there, you know, at least that, you know? It's because it's going to, no matter what they put there, it's going to change everything. The feeling that they'll, that, you know, this living in, in the country kind of feeling that you could still get here, you know, it's going to go. That's me.
All right, Fran, thank you.
Thank you.
You can go back to your time machine now.
Yeah. Yeah, go back to, go back to when it was two acres, this place. Yeah, right. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, and Jake, who was, who was up? Uh, who was up next? Lawrence? Who was it?
Yes.
Yes.
Lawrence, go ahead.
Uh, we live at 182 Atherton Avenue, uh, directly adjacent to 170 Atherton, which has been proposed for eight units. On a four acre site. And uh, having lived here for 49 years. And enjoying the character of Atherton. It, it just would uh, presuppose a disaster in terms of traffic. There are, there are no sidewalks in, on Atherton Avenue. Uh, I, I'm not sure, but I don't think there are any bike lanes on Atherton Avenue. Uh, people come and go on the, the side of all the properties, you know? You know, so there are major environmental issues uh, to deal with, uh, traffic being, being one of the many. The proposal includes density bonuses, which could increase the housing to maybe as many as 40 units. I'm not sure. But in any event, uh, my, my impression is it would just be a disaster for where we live. And uh, anybody in the neighborhood uh, would have the same problem. So we respectfully request that you reject the uh, overlay housing for 170 Atherton Avenue. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Lawrence. Thank you for waiting too. Uh, and I'm looking to the stream. I've got a note that says, uh, people are raising their hands, but I'm watching for people to raise their hands. That's another way. I've also got somebody who, uh, uh, Brian, you're, not only are you raising your hand, but I saw you in the chat stream. So you're up next, Brian. Go ahead, take yourself off mute, take yourself off mute and then you'll be ready to go. There you go.
Does that sound a little better?
That's, well, I don't know. We'll, we'll tell you at the end.
I, I'd, I'd um, kind of, first of all, echo the sentiment of thank you for this open forum. It's, it's great to be involved at this level. I live at, uh, with my wife, Ariana, 157 Atherton Avenue. So right across the street from, you know, the 170 property, which is um, for those of you who don't know it, look at it on, on uh, Google Maps. It's basically a, it's a sculpture park right now. It's, it's a, it's a beautiful space. I've always um, regretted not being invited to any of the events over there, but it, it is a, a corner piece of this neighborhood here. I would argue um, that um, we do actually have something that simulates property on 101 because Atherton Avenue has already become a freeway over the past two decades since we've lived here. And I do worry that both the, the nature of the housing, the density of the, 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 the units, the fact that we'll all be trying to survive multi-years of, of construction with uh, you know, countless vendors parked along the street. It's just, it's just untenable that you would look at that and say, this is a plan that strikes the balance between meeting these states' uh, goals. And preserving the character of the community, because I can't think of anything that would touch more to the character of the community in central Atherton than the development of that property at the proposed density. So my, my question would be, what more can we do as engaged uh, residents to, to brainstorm and come up with alternative plans that would actually help us meet the goals without, without touching these really prime locations in the city that truly do define the character of the city?
Yeah, Brian, we're going to keep on giving you some information around that. So I definitely appreciate that and definitely the, 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 the goal of this whole process, and particularly today going forward, is to make sure that we have a plan that we can submit that we're actually comfortable with, even though we wouldn't have asked for it. And that we can feel like that it retains the character. So we'll, we'll be, we'll be giving you more, uh, more opportunity to come up with ideas and a little bit more information on how to do that. Uh, the George Parsons, I, I see a comment there that uh, for Norm, the buildup of the El Camino has been clear to each community. So there's a lot going on as we know, and, and also down in Metal Park or down at the uh, there's some things going on down there. So there's a lot of, of development around us, we know. Ellen Jamison, or you want to speak? Or did you want to just make that, have the comment posted on the chat? I echo the statement by earlier commenter regarding reexamining other parcel for deaths or developments such as the city-owned property and corporate yard and play school site. So I just want to make sure that was on the record too. Andy, did you want to speak at uh, from 416 West Oakwood? I've seen your comment. Uh, very much agree with your neighbor's comments and that's, that's really efficient to do. One of the things about keeping the meeting moving, meeting moving along is to state your agreement. If you have any new points, bring them up. Uh, and uh, this is from, that was from Andy and Golly Faulkner. And uh, and then there's a question to George about how many units we can accommodate. Uh, and then Jennifer uh, has a question about uh, uh, why there's such large disparity between density proposals and, you know, we, we definitely have some uh, information around that. There's a public comment that was emailed uh, to Stephanie. We're going to go through all the emails uh, uh, presentations at the end of this. I want to make sure while people are all live online, we get the chances here for them. George Parsons, uh, we, you're up here, right? I see you waving. There you go, George. Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of questions and again, thank you, Commissioner, for allowing us to be part of this process. Uh, as some of our, my Oakwood community colleagues have said, you know, we've only been really introduced to this in the last 10 days. One thing that just jumped out at me is the chart that Lisa uh, presented on the overlay zone of, you know, 16 units per acre. Uh, it just jumped out at me, you know, and obviously there's security concerns, safety concerns, capacity of the neighborhood to even accommodate that from a sewer and a planning perspective. And I'm, I'm sure that the uh, city, Redwood City representatives that's on the call today would continue to realize that also that it could be huge costs on the city of Redwood City if that density was actually approved. So in, in the point that I, I would, my wife and I have been arguing, why doesn't the city of Atherton look at what other communities have been doing up and down the El Camino? Where it can accommodate that kind of density, where that kind of density has become the norm. Uh, you can go all the way up to the 92 and all the way down through Palo Alto and into Mountain View. And you're seeing exactly that kind of uh, urban development where it, more and more of these small shops are being turned into multi-level units of work, shop and live. Uh, have you looked at that as an alternative, Commissioner Lane?
And, and, and we have an answer to that, but let me do it at the end like we, what we're going to do in general. All right. Just want to make sure that everybody's here gets to, gets to go before they have to pick up a kid or something else that they have to do in their life. Uh, Jamie Green, you're, you're up next and I can, if I can see you somewhere, Jamie, get yourself off mute if you're on mute.
Hey, sorry, I'm uh, I'm, I'm not in an area where I have enough service for video, but uh,
You popped, your, your name popped up for the first time on my main screen, so I appreciate that. Go ahead.
Perfect. Uh, I live at One Berry Lane uh, in Atherton. I'd like to better understand the long-term housing plan for Atherton. As a residence, it seems like this is very reactionary to the state, which we have to be right now. Um, obviously we need to be in compliance, so I understand that. But it was mentioned by you at the beginning that we want to keep the character of the town. And uh, find a framework that works within the state's framework, but also within uh, the guiding principles of the town. And when I looked at the map that you guys pulled up, um, a lot of the choices made sense to me. Along this, uh, along the side of town where there's already more dense lots. People have mentioned El Camino, um, would be curious about what we're thinking out where there's already areas where there's smaller lots, so around City Hall. Why those areas aren't being considered where it wouldn't change the character of the town as much as if you put it in 170 Atherton, which is right in the middle of town, which is large, larger lots. Um, so just want to understand, you know, as it seems like it's a little bit of a whack a mole. Um, it was mentioned that council members are driving around town, looking at open lots and deciding, hey, we should do it there. We should do it there. That one we could do now. Um, I'd like to understand more longer picture, what the, uh, what the town is thinking. Um, so every eight years, we don't have, um, hey, there's uh, something in my backyard and I'm upset, something in this, but you know, it's more just, okay, this is the long-term plan over the next 50 years where we're going to have to build up to be in compliance with this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. And uh, this, eight years is our long-term plan, just for the record and, and uh, uh, other than just the fact that if you look at the history of the, of the town, uh, we've had a long-term plan for a long time, which is lower density. So uh,
Yeah, no, no, I, I hear you. And then it doesn't make sense why suddenly you'd have 170, which is in the lowest dense area in the town. You're going to build townhouses there. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kenneth, uh, Kenneth Frederick, you want to speak to also? I see your comment here. It's not clear that we possibly meet the goal of our state government and maintain its character. We need to address the state policy. Uh, did you want to speak in addition to that? And let me tell you, a lot of us have been doing that for the last two years. I, I spoke, I contacted the governor directly about it. All right, Adam Lansdorff. There's, he mentioned that there's a, there's a proposal to vote against SB nine for the November 24 and he has a comment around making that, that addresses the previous comment, which is how do you change the state policy? That's one of the state policies that, that wouldn't affect it. Actually, that could make this worse. Uh, if we weren't allowed to, uh, split properties. Uh, I'm looking for people waving their hands.
They want to speak.
Who's up? Does that, I don't see any hand waving going on.
Do the hand wave.
Or, or something. Who, somebody say a name, please.
Can, can Mr. Lansdorff speak, please?
Oh, yeah, Adam Lansdorff. There you go. I'm, I'm, I just saw that one. All right, go ahead.
Hi, sorry. I'm uh, here with my son and my family. We are third generation Athertonians. So um, this entire conversation, I, I missed the beginning of it, but I've been reading up on it is very distressing to uh, my hometown and I'm sure a lot of the other callers feel the same way. Uh, so before rushing into any of these proposals, I think it is warranted to uh, let, let maybe the state play out and the what is it? The um, legislative uh, uh, opposition play out and the legal uh, opposition play out before taking any steps. And then I also agree with the previous comments about looking at the corridors that already have urban density instead of destroying the town and putting it in central Atherton.
All right. Thank you, Adam. I appreciate it. Anyone else uh, speak? Because I want to make sure that we have uh, also uh,
I'd like to speak. I'm, I'm his wife. Um, I just wanted to say, yeah.
Where are you? Where are you? Who are, who are, who is it?
I'm, I'm Mrs. Lansdorff. So as a lifelong Bay Area resident, born and raised in this area. Same thing. I find this entirely distressing and the state did pass SB nine against the opposition of literally including all liberal and Republican areas. You know, there was like at least 70% opposition as far as polls and cities across California, Northern, Southern California, everywhere grossly oppose this. Um, and the state passed it anyway. They attempted to put this on the ballot for this year. Unfortunately, there were not enough signatures, really because of COVID shutdowns. They just couldn't get out there to mobilize. Um, so this is a really big grassroots thing that's actually gained a lot of steam and I am positive if this gets on the ballot, that people will vote against it and SB nine will disappear. Um, so I think whatever framework needs to be proposed on paper that we're forced to do, fine. But I don't think a single shovel should go in the ground anywhere until 2024 passes and to see what happens on the ballot.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, let's see. Uh, Francine, you already spoke once and I had a follow-on question. Let me continue on some of the names and I'll come back to you. Uh, Zach Whitman, did you have a comment that you wanted to say?
Nothing beyond which we put in the comment section. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the comment you made is a, uh, and he agrees with uh, Kenneth Frederick's comment also for Atherton residents who look closer to the edge of the town. Like myself, I feel the impact should be, uh, would be fairly evenly spread throughout the town and not relegated to just certain properties at the edge of the community.
By the way, Kenneth Frederick's statement was about addressing the, the policy of the state.
Yes, right. Thank you.
No different.
Thank you very much. I'm just reading what you said below. That is all I was doing. Uh, that, and just to point out, uh, there, there are two separate things going on here. SB nine has already passed and if, if there's a, if there's something on the election, that, that's, that's separate. Well, still we, we require to have, have these mandates met as part of our eight-year plan, regardless of what happens to SB, SB nine. So it's important to separate those two things. It's a, a double overlay in terms of what's going on because we don't know the effect of SB nine yet. As well, because it hasn't hit in a major way in the town, but also this is separate. So I just want to make sure that everyone's up to speed on that. I'm not seeing hands being raised. I'm, I'm looking for anyone who would like to speak on this subject before I go into the highlighting of the messages we've received on email. Anyone else speak? Let me, let me do this. And Kenneth agreed with me on, on the SB nine comment. Let me, let me do this. I'll, I'll start going through some of the, the letters that we received and highlight them so that people know that they were on, on record. And in the process of that, maybe somebody changes their mind and wants to speak and then we'll give you a little more time to do that. So I'm going to start with some letters that aren't about Oakwood because we received 17 letters on Oakwood. Some of them are exactly the same. So there was some of those very thoughtfully providing an outline for people to leverage off of. So that's again, a good, good sign that there's good connection within the neighborhood. Well, I'll do those, I'll do those next, but just to let you know, the 17 comments that I, that 17 emails received from the, from the people in the last 24 hours from Oakwood cover exactly the same points that have brought, been brought forward by all the Oakwood area residents that have spoken today. So I just want you to know that there, there's some, I'll highlight them, but they, they, they don't miss a point that has been brought up. And I didn't, I, I didn't see a point that was different, but if I was real through them, I'll try to look for that. There's a, there's an email that we received from Ellen Jamison. And it's, it says, Dear Planning Commissioners, we are the Atherton residents, three of us support the plan proposed, the draft housing element under review, including the overlay zones. We would also support measures not currently included in the plan, such as expanding the overlay zones to allow for higher density and additional and or different properties, allowing ADUs to be built above garages and other measures to increase the likelihood of housing units being built. We support or encourage the town to work cooperatively and construct with the state in its implementations of current laws and mandates, including ADU implementation SB nine and new HCD requirements. As we all know, housing production in the Bay Area has not been on pace with job and population growth. We believe there is plenty of room for, to allow for more housing to help meet the needs of the committee at large. Housing costs make it difficult for seniors and downsizing, who are downsizing and young families to find a home where, where, home here and even make it difficult for current residents to pass along their homes to next generation. Allowing limited higher density in our town is a good step forward toward keeping the town, the area vibrant and showing multiple generations of families stay and, stay in town. Well, we do not support the using any town funds or any related public funds to oppose the state laws and mandates to make more difficult for implementation of town. We appreciate your hard work, dedication to your committee and good work on the council and staff. And this is from, from Gocomo Marini and Ellen Jamison and Serena Marini. All right. And then there's also an email here from Jerry Fitch. And my Jerry Fish and my wife and I live at 302 Fletcher Drive and for the last 40 years. I'm surprised and disappointed that planning commission meeting is not being held at an in-person option. We did, we didn't have a room, but you know, frankly. And I hope, and also we want to make sure that everybody got to, to be part of it. I hope that we read my comments in the record and it takes about three minutes. The following section is from the town Atherton General Plan and he outlines the general plan that developed with high density higher, high-rise residential structures or commercial use of the any kind would destroy the scenic role and open space character of the town and therefore prohibited. If you want to approve higher density overlays, change the general plan. Also, I do not believe that mayor or this, the single council mayor is elected to perform the increasing densities of the town to eight more units to the, to the acre. Change the nature of the town is going to be, take place. It would, should be done by council members who are elected down that platform. It is currently possible that the housing plan in the state, and the state relies on SB nine, ADUs vacant lots and, and housing located on the mental school, mental college and sacred heart properties until any density overlay without any density overlays. As you know, only eight municipalities out of 27, I highlighted that early in the beginning and only, only only 10, only eight have been approved in the, in the last 15 months. Why not watch what happens in Southern California? And of course, before you change the entire nature of Atherton, stop being afraid of the droning punishment to the state and submit a plan based on the SB nine ADUs. Vacant lots and school housing, as you know, whenever it's submitted, the first time will be rejected. So what? Play the long game rather than rushing forward and trying to gold star. Let's wait until the November mayor and council elections. Let's let those who are in favor of eight to an acre overlays run the platform and let the community make a decision. If after thorough planning, planning review, which would include many public meetings and public workshops and decision, it's made an odd density to, so be it. I would suggest considering the El Camino Railroad corridor is a strong possibility for density housing. As we have, have seen taking place in San Carlos Belmont, Redwood City, Mall Park and Palo Alto. What about podium style housing for policemen and firemen over the town center parking lots? Randomly select a few parcels of the willing seller and willing developer and is not planning. I have, I've been a resident, a residential real estate developer for more than 50 years. I would happily and profitably build eight houses per acre on almost any lot in Atherton. If you approve this plan as a few, as three council members have changed the nature of Atherton, that would be unfair to every citizen who's fortunate enough to call Atherton home. I ask that you recommend against existing proposal, but instead recommend that staff and council submit proposals based on SB nine ADUs vacant lots and school property. Thank you for consideration, Jerry Finch. And thank you, Jerry. And also I want to reiterate, we're not making any recommendations to the, to the council. We're just offering a space for people to, to, to speak. And, and all this recorded for the, for the collection and review of the, of the council. And then here's us, something from Jerry, printed it twice. And this is from Delvin Yoke. Dear Ralph and planning team members, I'm submitting my concerns and opposition to propose 32 units on Atherton Avenue. My family lives in Atherton Avenue, a very close to proposed multi-plan B zoning site, 170 Atherton. I understand the town is working hard to meet the California housing mandates, but I don't think the site appropriate for, this site is appropriate for multiple units per acre. Atherton Avenue is already busy street and with children riding bicycles to schools, I'm afraid I need 30 more units. So the selection of the street, the section of the street will make traffic much worse, more congested and dangerous, especially at the Atherton Avenue Berry Lane intersection. And I hope the town will explore other options like more ADUs or facility housing at mental college campus to satisfy the state housing requirements. Thank you, Delvin Yuke at 194 Atherton Avenue. And then as I get into the, what I, what I'd like to, I think I'd like to do, I'd like to highlight the name of the people that, that, that have spoken that, that have written in about Oakwood. And, and because they overlap so much, I'm trying to make sure, one, they're on the record, but also that we don't, just like I would in the, and the rest of the session, don't spend everyone's time reiterating points that are, that are made. So we have, we have something from Stephanie Tenevere from 435 East Oakwood Boulevard in Redwood City. And she highlights the Oakwood, Oakwood property and, and says, I support the increased densities statewide to allow for more affordable housing for local populations. We have several concerns, the current proposal down Atherton, among the nine, among the nine proposed properties for zone, the only property that is proposed with a 16 units per acre density is a property in 22, 23 Oakwood. This creates an opportunity for the devil to construct 26 homes. On the one and a half acre site, the remaining proposed sites are for increased density are proposed at six units and eight units, which, which has been talked about and that these 26 townhomes, which is assumed will be part of the prospect will like, she says, will likely 50 plus additional cars will create a significant traffic impact and non-major thoroughfare on Oakwood Boulevard. And we frequently raise concerns about the safety of increased traffic on the residential area. Given no sidewalks in the area, a busy walking zone for local residents and the added significant safety hazards to the area would hazard many young families such as ours who frequently are outside. The significant effect of local parking restraints with the residents and their guests potentially now parking on east and west Oakwood Boulevard and Southley Lane. It's notable that the inequity present with your proposal and with your singling out of the, of the dense home constructed only on the site bordering a lower economic status and higher diversity of the Redwood City. We believe that the current proposal has not been considered the impacts adequately and strongly suggests that the density of the construction should be, at the very least, be equitable across the, the regions there. Furthermore, I suggest that the proper evaluation of traffic impacts, safety impacts and proper value impacts on a local community should be performed before agreeing to the proposal. Sincerely, Stephanie Turner, Tenevere. So that, then also we received something from from JD Aganastu, Aganastow. And where he, he and his wife live at 327 Oakwood Boulevard. And they appreciate the outreach of proposed process. It's not easy process for us since it's the R1A and R1B. We don't have scaled higher density districts and so but the 23 Oakwood is the highest density feels discriminatory and unlawful since the property is contiguous to Redwood City and therefore why not show this density close to the border, which was reiterated, reiterated for the previous letter. And Redwood City is lesser valued city anyway. So it, there's a number of items relative to conflicting this on Redwood City. Believe your town should consider the immediate future implementing plans that creates a higher density districts that should look at their other neighborhoods around the city. And then there are other points in terms of Atherton High School, Oak Grove Avenue, 12 homes, approximately one per acre. 12 homes for acre on the east side of Holbrook Park. It appears to be feasible density, but it said, I, I don't see how you can properly do this like by the end of the year to fully consider the, the, all the predicaments. The, it's just choice for properties need to be thought, thought through carefully. Vetted through the more transparent and public process and not just the 500th readiness. This affects the whole town. Actually, my notice has been sent to the whole town, but, but I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. The effects of the whole town as well as the Menlo Park and Redwood City, this, this type of approach affects lives forever. I have been involved with the real estate business for 37 years and certainly have seen much change, both good and bad. I truly hope to consider the long-term implications of your actions. Not just a hastily fill the 340 required RHN units in the next eight-year cycle. When the next cycle comes up, when will your approach be, or your approach be then? Another selection of random properties, do the right thing, create the density zoning districts that others have done. Atherton does need to change a little, but we can change in a way that you will be proud of and your residents will be thankful that you change the title, change a little. But the change is the way that you're proud of, makes you, the change is what you'd be proud of in your residence. We thankful you have the leaders of the community. And that's, that's, I wish, I wish you well, JD. Good self. So I, I can, I want to highlight the people who have come forward. I'm not going to, I, I think that I'm, I'm looking for staff input on this. I, rather than are we able to make these letters public on our website?
So through the chair, staff's plan was to consolidate all the letters that have been received to date on the housing element, and then we would provide those on the website at the conclusion of the 30-day comment period.
All right. Well, then I'm going to, I'm going to highlight the, the people who, who made sure that they sent us something and as I, I've read through these and they're all covering the, the points that have been brought up. I don't want to leave anybody up and I want to give them credit for coming forward, but I also want to make sure our time is, is spent as effectively as possible. So I'm going to, I'm going to highlight their names and if you're on that list and you're on this call, I look, I look for you to, to ask for time to speak. That would, that would help too. We've received another comment about 23 Oakwood property with the similar issues around traffic and and the, the effect on Redwood City from Francine Mittenberger. Francine lives at, at 351 West Oakbrook. And then another letter, actually using the same format that was sent from a number of different individuals. So I think what I'll do is I'll, I'll read this one because there were like five submitted with exactly the same comments. So it was obviously something that people coordinated to make sure that their voice was heard. This one is, is, is from Andrew Faulkner. I think we heard him, Andrew, didn't we? At 416 North Oakwood Boulevard, homeowner at 416 Oakwood. And a lot of my neighbors are mobilizing to respond to the notice from the joint, joining Atherton regarding proposed rezoning, for writing in regard to recent notice. And here are the points that he highlights and about five other respondents highlight that the townhouses will be constructed a lot size out of proportion with the local community. For lots, lots, lots are mostly 8,000 square feet. These 26 townhomes would likely 50%, 50 plus additional cars will create significant traffic impact and non-major thoroughfare on Oakwood Boulevard. Given no sidewalks in the area, the busy walking, the, this has significant safety, the significant impact of local parking constraints. The inequity of the singling out denser homes, construction only, a site bordering the socioeconomic status and higher density of Redwood City. Not good for urban planning. Multi-planly housing would be located in places zone for higher density already or larger streets, not a small residential area. And the original plan did not include 23 Oakwood, but it was added due to an owner request. Have answered increase in particulars, property's value, but bad policies overall. And we believe that the current proposal has not been considered. These impacts adequately and strongly suggest the density of the construction be at least equitable across regions. Further, we suggest the proper evaluation of of the impacts, the impacts and property value impacts to local communities that should be performed before agreeing to the proposal. That's Andrew Faulkner at 490, at 416 West Oakwood. And the nearly identical email or the, the identical points, a similar email surrounding it was forwarded by Julia Matzman at A King Rossi Lane in Redwood City. And this, the similar points and format were forwarded by, by Paul Uchelli and Marina Torito, 28 Rossi Lane in Redwood City. And then a similar format and same points was put, was put forward by Hannah Siri at 340 West Oakwood Boulevard. In Redwood City, I believe. It doesn't specify the city, but it's on that's, that address. And then the same format also was given to us by Ivan De Garza at 572 West Cypress and Redwood City. And that same, that same format was given to us by Paul and Jasmine Libery at 21 Rossi Lane in Redwood City. And that same format was presented. Let's see exactly, yeah, the exactly same points were presented by Albert Chung, MD and Jennifer Potluck Chung at 366 East Oakwood Boulevard in Redwood City. And same format, same comments by Carol Segutum and family with no address. And same, same, same points, different format. I'm great on a favor of greater housing format, but have some concerns about 2020, I'll work with 26 town. Great, on a favor of greater housing format, but have some concerns about twenty-three Oakwood, Oakwood with twenty-six townhomes. My main concern is whether or not because around even infrastructure will be able to keep up. This will significantly increase the traffic in Oakwood and a number of other cars, so that the points are the same, just a little different format. And this is by Tyne and Smith at four oh six West Oakwood Boulevard in Redwood City. And here's another one with the original format with all the same points, and this is by Kevin and Maria Riley. No address included on this one. And then saying, let's see, this one is different format by Stephanie Shovinett, we, we talked about her earlier, I written for it, read hers before, I just printed it twice. And here's one from, from Joan and Scott Wiley. My husband and I were supportive of the earlier proposal density of ten units per acre, sixteen maximum for one point oh five acres of twenty-three Oakwood Boulevard. But we are strongly opposed to sixteen acres, twenty-six maximum because it would create a significant amount of new traffic in Oakwood Boulevard. And the adjoining streets, South Bay Lane, Atherton Avenue and Oakwood Circle in Redwood City. This will destroy the residential character, residential character of our, of our neighborhood and result in a precarious situation with the numerous bikers, walkers and school children that use the streets. We are seeking a meaningful reduction of the number of units that we built and the economics of the project at a lower density can be aligned with making select number of convenience somewhat larger. That's Joan, Joan and Scott Wiley at twenty-three Oakwood Boulevard. And the standard format, as I mentioned before, was presented by Rick Rosendine at three twenty-eight West Oakwood Boulevard in Redwood City. And all, and that was the, all the same points. And the last one I have right now is the same points and the same format by Andrew Faulkner at four sixteen, I think that's a repeat. So, those are the, those are the things we've received in the last, you know, twenty-four hours and, and week by many by some of the other ones. And we're looking for more and we're looking for not only what we don't want, but also what could solve the problem. So I'm appreciative of the fact that everyone, everyone who showed up had, had positive thoughts and was trying to come up with a solution. And as we are, there's one other one that's here that came in first in my queue. From Dan Alberti. Who, a long time Atherton resident, my wife Gail Daily, I've lived in thirty-three seventy-seven Fletcher Drive for thirty-six years. Raising our children here and participating in community activities from coaching little leagues to volunteering in various town and community communities, including my work in the Atherton Heritage Tree Committee with Sally Benz. And where we used my forty-five years of experience as a litigation attorney to work with found foundational rules and regulations, which ultimately evolved the Atherton Heritage Tree, Heritage Tree ordinance. As will be seen in the exhibit below, exhibit one below, sounds like he is an attorney. First became aware of the relatively secretive decision by the city council to include two ninety possamists within the overdraft housing element. When I read it on six two twenty-two in the Almanac Online. Again, as described in exhibit one, immediately reviewed every bit of information on the Atherton website related to housing element, including a painstaking review of the videos of every city council meeting. And dealt with every way with the draft housing element before it was hurriedly published in six ten. I am sure the council is aware by now that the town residents are furious about the council's unilateral decision not to communicate with them about the two ninety Poehmas Avenue before voting to include the property in the draft housing element. My comments and objections outlined below pursuant to the California Government Code are to be included in any submission to the Atherton, the California Department of Housing and Community Development. If the two, two ninety Poehmas is actually included within the housing element update, that Atherton will submit to the HCD and after the thirty-day comment period. I also intend to directly present HCD with my comments and objections, which are based on the critical factual and legal problems with the inclusion of two ninety Poehmas in the after the draft housing element update. As, as Linda Coy and the HCD use, the planning manager stated during the housing element review process, I really appreciate third-party comments that give us on the ground perspective. And one, the California enacted significant changes to the housing laws, which he highlights here. And highlights those changes we've talked about earlier. But he's highlighting the past, the past California cities got away with submitting housing elements reports that didn't have a requirement with the plan. Now, the current California law, government code now specifies that the city is relying on non-vake sites like two ninety Poehmas. When identifying parcels available for lower income housing, it must prove that there are realistic probability that the current use of the non-vake property as issue will be discontinued and not impede the proclaimed projection of residential development, which we have talked about. The careful review is not incorporated into the draft housing element along with support, in fact, described below. And he talks about the draft housing element makes crystal clear that the city council's attempt to shoehorn two ninety Poehmas into the draft, or housing element update violence controlling California law outlined above. And then number two, that, that number two bullet, he has, his facts are relevant in, and why the city council improperly and unlawfully include two ninety Poehmas to the out as the draft housing element reported on six twenty, and he outlines that. And then item number three is HCD requires that local government must take, must make a diligent effort to achieve public participation in their community, in the development of the site and use in housing. And he says that, that the extensive public engagement, which this is part of. And he wants, and he's raised the discontent with the city council directing Mayor DiGiulia about the discovery of the, of the two ninety property and his surprise around that. In conclusion, with an understanding that this initial comment submission will just dealt with why to, to, two ninety Poehmas should be included in the housing element because it cannot be considered an available site under law. I did not, did not address the insubtlety of the prop, of the property such as numerous, which are numerous. If any recipient of this submission receives the two ninety Poehmas is actually illegally available site. After reviewing the facts and the law outlined above, I would appreciate reviewing your analysis. Until that time, I will defer to other residents who I'm sure will frame the obvious EIR-based traffic infrastructure unsuitability issues that should make it a moot point. Once the property is found unavailable under the law, respectfully submitted, Dan Alberti, three seventy-seven Fletcher Drive. Right. Now, to a certain extent, on when I have the reading through some of these, I feel like one of the scars that reads their, reads their tweets in, in public. Okay, I'm looking, is there anyone that would like to speak at this point? Let me look through some of the chats that have happened while I've been focused on Perry. Perry has, Perry, let me, let me come back to you for in a minute when we open up, when we close the public hearing, is that right? Perry, you might be on it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, is that, that's okay, okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right, great, I'm, I'm gonna back up and look at, let's see. So, Adam Langsor says, so increasing housing density is outside of SB nine mandates. Then why, why is it being done? And how will we peel the housing element? Seems like the crux of the matter, let's mobilize. And we'll explain some more about the SB nine and the overlap to, to this plan in a minute. George, let me see. George, maybe I'll have you make that comment. A couple of things, the background resource, A-BAG is the ministry agency of the Bay Area with respect to the state's housing committee development. Here, and there's a link to the A-BAG site for those of you who can look at the chat. And taught the, and there's also a link to the town housing element website and the background resources if you need that. And then there's also a link to this state HCD housing website that George, our, our town manager has, has provided. So that's additional background information for those of you interested. Larry Kaboul, did you want to speak or do you want me just to read this, Larry? Larry says, Larry?
That, that's fine, you can just go ahead and read it. It was all in the comment.
All right, good. I said if the goal is not to change the character of the town, then the addition of higher density units should be in the areas of similar, close density minimizing contrast, reserve consistency, lots of factors to consider, but it seems like this is the reasonable principle to guide the action. And then Adam Lansdorff, you, you've got a comment, bottom line, it seems like nobody wants to increase density in our backyard. We all moved to this town because we wanted to quietly enjoy it in our small town, see if we don't need to resign ourselves, we accept increased housing density, seems like the answer tonight, in opposition to increased density as our small town already suffers from increased traffic. Safety issues associated with that and loss of quiet enjoyment. Overall, this is bad policy all around. It seems like the only workaround is is a housing in private schools, campuses in Atherton, ADUs and building a community corridor where increased density already exists. And then JD, I guess you, you, you sent us a letter and you've got a comment. Good, I'm glad you're here. Did you want to speak, JD?
Hi Chairman, it just, it was just a quick note and thank you for the, thank you for the opportunity, this venue, it's, it's impressive to allow us to speak, certainly as much as you've allowed us to do so. I, the just comment I wanted to make, you know, I may be too far into the woods on this, but I just wanted to ask. You know, in the event of the townhouse overlay district, is, is the, are the units one hundred percent moderate to above moderate or a forty, whatever that definition is and I did receive what that income requirement is, but are, you know, are they one hundred percent in, in that category, the units one hundred percent, or is it a percentage of the total project size for, for that type of resident? And are these for rent only, or are they for sale, or they are a combination of both?
All right, thank you. Those are good, those are good questions to, to have an answer to. All right, I'm not seeing, let's see, I'm, I've got, I'm down to two pages on my screen rather than three, so I have, some people have cut out. Shoot, I thought this is so scintillating, we'd have ten pages by now. I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand. So, this is a chance, last chance to speak before I close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and thoughts. I'm gonna check around. Jake, if you can, those screwed around, screwed around the different pictures to make sure nobody's coming forward.
Yes, I, I agree, there's no hands or comments that are outstanding.
All right, last chance, going once, going twice. By the way, this is my gavel when I'm home, it's, it's a meat tenderizer, which I find to be very somehow useful. It's about the only time I use a meat tenderizer, by the way. All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. And maybe some staff directive as, as appropriate. Again, we're not taking any action, we're not approving anything tonight, we're just here to make sure that people are heard. And we continue to open the door for, for comments ongoing. And you, as you can tell. I read them. So, we all do. So, with that, Lisa, I know that you've been taking copious notes. And you might have some thoughts and answers, so before I bring it back to the commission, I, I want you to give you a chance to, to talk through some of the things you, you responding to.
Thank you. So, I'm just responding to questions. I understand there's a lot of comments expressing concern with the, the properties that were identified. But one question was about some of the town-owned property. Yes, the city council did consider possibly putting some units at the corporation yard. It was also raised at the Hope Palmer Park. And I think the corporation yard challenge was that you'd get such few units, I think the thought was maybe four or six. And that the town would then need to find another place to put the corporation yard. And there really just isn't suitable land within the town to do so, so they may have to look outside the town limits. So that was why that was rejected by the council and then a lot of concern about taking away land from the one and only park in the community for, for housing. So that was another comment from the council as to why that was considered but not pursued further. The concept around, I guess, long-term planning question. So the town's general plan is its long-range planning document, it's intended to be a twenty-year vision of what the town development and, you know, goals and policies would be. That was updated in twenty nineteen, and when that was done, the town decided to do it more of an in-house style of an update using its planning consulting staff, so my, my staff. Rather than go out to a firm and do a larger, long-range planning where we kind of have a fresh look at the community. So that was a decision that was made, and so it was more of a compliance with current state law rather than a new look at land use for the community.
And that was, that was a, that was a, a town council decision to do that.
Correct, correct, to just update the general plan rather than look at wholesale changes in land use.
Right.
The A-BAG numbers that were assigned to us that we talked about, those three hundred and forty-eight units. Those were assigned December of twenty twenty-one, so that was like six, seven months ago that we got the numbers. And as I told, indicated, the last cycle we got ninety-three and this is three hundred and forty-eight, so it's a substantial increase. And it wasn't envisioned in twenty nineteen when we did the general plan update that it would be such a large increase. I think that it may be the next iteration or shortly after this one that the council does want to take a comprehensive look at land use and see how it wants to address it in the long term. That's typically a two-year process and about a million dollars, just, just to give you some context. El Camino Real, the council did look at opportunities to develop higher density along El Camino. They looked at ten units an acre and twenty units an acre. One of the challenges with those properties is that they're much smaller in size. They're maybe half an acre to three tenths of an acre in area, some even smaller than that, so.
They're in the dark, they're in the dark yellow area on our map, correct?
Correct, along El Camino and then, yeah, around town center area. And so the thought is we would need some parcel consolidation and you'd need probably higher density than even ten or twenty to make her to take a pencil out, but that's certainly something that could be further studied. If you're only looking at ten units an acre, that's less than you can develop today under SB nine. You would only be able to get a total of like three units, whereas SB nine you can get a total of four units. Let's see, the timing of the economic study, it is underway and we're expecting it within the next two or three weeks. And that would take a look at kind of the feasibility of how much affordability we could require. And then I think the last question I got was rental or for sale and percent of affordable. It's really up to whoever chooses to develop the property, if they want to make it rental or for sale. The town cannot determine, cannot regulate that, we can't say this has to be for sale or it has to be rental, we cannot do that. Percent of affordability, we're assuming a twenty percent affordability. But we need to do that economic study to make that final determination. So that's what's being assumed here. We are not assuming any one hundred percent affordable housing developments. The only way that would probably be feasible if it was on town-owned land because of the very high cost to acquire.
And, and the possibility of whatever their rent was set and I do, right, at ADU.
Right, the ADUs would certainly be affordable and then the faculty housing, we have those in different affordability categories as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Few questions, Lisa?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, so, you know, being, I've been in the real estate development business for a few generations. The point of the matter, I have really a question is, if we are trying to grow to three hundred and forty-eight. One, one entity we didn't hear from were the potential developers of this. Because like, for example, the question is, is this for sale for rent? You know, again, this is like, if, if we're gonna put forty units on somebody's property. A, the, the preliminary question is, is this like a taking, is the city buying the lot? Is the developer buying a lot? There was no representation from any developer saying, you know, I'm interested in helping you, you know, address this issue. Have you had any questions from developers? Because this would be a real goldmine for, for the developer, I would imagine. From the perspective of they could, you know, meet our requirements in terms of, and I'm not even sure what the far would be. The ratio is, can you go up three floors, four floors, you know? A whole bunch of questions would need to be answered, so maybe that will be answered in the economic review. But if we're doing low-income housing, that could be section eight housing, if we're doing middle income, high income. You know, like we see in Menlo Park, some of the beautiful apartments and condos and townhouses. There's a variance in all of that, but the bottom line, it's, it's just not clear to me what are, what's, what's the objective here? And why aren't we hearing from some of the developers as, as to trying to address this requirement for us? Maybe you have heard from some of them, but none of them were on the phone and I also checked the letters, I didn't see anything. The only, the only name I recognized was Agnew, who is a, you know, he's been selling up and down Atherton. I've lived in Atherton for twenty years, he's a real estate I've lived in Atherton for twenty years. He's a real estate agent. So maybe he'd be like the listing agent or something. Do we have any information of who would be building this housing? At what cost and what quality and how to surpass our housing laws? Because this is just like an entire new paradigm.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's get an answer to your question.
Sure, sure, yeah. Very long, I'm sorry.
Sure. Um, so staff has spoken to two different property owner and developers that are interested in the specific properties that are on this list. So twenty three Oakwood and one seventy Atherton Avenue.
And who are they?
I'm sorry?
Who are they? Do you know their names?
Um, the twenty three Oakwood is the property owner. Um, and that's Mr. Arata, and he has spoken publicly at the council meeting as well. And then, um, I'm sorry. Arata.
How do you spell that?
A R A T A.
Okay.
Um, and then the other is um, at one seventy Atherton Avenue, um, P P G Peninsula. Pacific Peninsula Group, they're um, interested in developing that and they've had conversations with the property owner. So I've spoken with both of them. Um, the council has had conversations with them as well and as well as the city manager. So they've shared some ideas with us. Twenty three Oakwood even has a concept plan that he shared. Um, and he's interested in doing more of a traditional townhome style of development with smaller units like you would see in other communities. At one seventy Atherton, they're interested in um, more like I would say garden homes kind of clustered, so probably thirty five hundred to four thousand square foot homes that would be one to two stories in height. Um, so not, you know, a big tower high density project. And then what we talked about is looking at of those units, they would be market rate. And then twenty percent would be required by city code to be affordable. And it may just be at the moderate income category and not the very low and low income category because of the extremely high cost to develop.
And I'm gonna piggyback on that, Gabby, real quick. Since you've used those terms, uh, uh, JD brought up the question about on the chat here about what the definition of moderate above moderate mean and 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 what kind of thing? So that that also would be informative right now while we're still on that subject. And uh, he has a couple of other comments too, but I thought it's focus on the, the gist of it.
Yeah. What's the name of the developer for one seventy Atherton? Can you repeat that to me, please?
P P G.
Can you spell that?
Letters, the letter P, the letter P, the letter G. P as in pig, P as in pig, G as in giraffe. They do a lot of single family home development in Atherton.
Now, okay, all right, that's good to hear. I know some of the.
Gabby, you can Lisa can talk offline too and and get some more detail on some of the other options.
Absolutely, yeah. Sorry to pick up the time.
That's all right. That's all right. So Lisa, what?
This gives me a lot of good context, I think, for the general neighbors to make them feel a lot more comfortable. These are more like garden homes, not like four story towers or six story towers, so. Okay, this is good. Thank you.
I mean, so if you, if you look at the units over by uh, by Stanford that are all clustered together over there, that's kind of the style, I think, that they're you're talking about, the ones that are right now, Camino that uh, popped up over there, that's about the density we're talking. Uh, Lisa, did you have any information on that moderate income and all that, whatever, and you're?
Yeah, I need to pull it up, so I was trying to do that.
Well, good, we'll come back, we'll come back to you. Uh, Gabby, did you have any other comments?
Um, yeah, so when you talked, Lisa, like maybe we can knock offline with the one seventy Atherton. How many units they want to build there? Is it forty? Is that correct? Forty garden apartment?
Let's let, well, let's, hold on, let me, yeah, let her do her homework on that. If you have more questions for uh, Lisa, then we'll come back to her real quickly, but.
Yeah, the Atherton Avenue was a total of thirty two. But that's kind of the max. They haven't really come up with a plan yet.
Okay, yeah, because that would be a build out of probably, if you say there are about five hundred thousand each to build up. That would be, you know, a large project. So, you know, as long as the, you know, the neighbors are okay with that, it's like building a fifteen, twenty million dollar you know, home. So, you know, it's obviously within apartments, so or not apartments, but gardens, homes, okay? Yeah, so, yeah. People are gonna have to get comfortable with this concept, obviously. So, okay, very good. Thank you very much for the info.
All right, thank you. All right, Lisa, while you continue to look at the, uh, the income answer, I, uh, other commissioners, uh, have something to say. Uh, Perry, you know, anyone, I have some stuff to go, but Perry, go ahead.
Just very quickly, there was some discussion about collecting uh, the emails and publishing them on the website. Uh, I'm just wondering if uh, everyone would be comfortable uh, having their names on the website. So we might want to consider contacting each of the uh, submitters and just confirming that they're okay publishing those on there.
Yeah, I don't think we want, we won't be publishing email addresses, right?
We typically redact the email address, yes.
Right. Yeah, we want to make sure that people know that they were heard by reflecting it, but we want to keep their confidentiality, Perry, so it's a good point. But I know that the fact is I've never seen an email on any of those things that are published. Any other, any other comments? Perry?
Okay, I can share real quick the um, affordability.
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, can you see that? It's a little hard to read, but.
Do it up a little bit more, yeah.
Yeah.
The plus size should do it.
And this is in, there's a, there's a table in the housing element as well, and we can send this all out. Um, so it's gonna vary based on the size of the unit as to what the income category is and then what the the rent or the for sale price would be. So if you just want to assume, say, a two bedroom unit, just for fun, that's gonna be a three person family size. And so the maximum income that family could generate if they are very low is eighty two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, low income is a hundred and thirty one thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And then the median income is a hundred and thirty four thousand. And then um, moderate would be a hundred and twenty percent of that, so I have to do a little math. And then the maximum rent or sales price is going to be based on thirty percent of that income. And so you'll see that in that table below has the maximum affordable rent. It's much more difficult to figure out the sales price from there because you need to take into consideration property tax, homeowner's insurance, you know, what a interest rate might be and then what they could pay on a monthly mortgage. Um, but it would be limited to thirty percent of their income is what they would pay for all that. And so then you kind of run those calculations back to figure out the sales price, but it's gonna be much lower than your typical Atherton residence.
Well, of, of course, but I mean, that's the whole paradigm shift is that there's never been condos available and now there's never been apartments available. So, you know, that's the sensitivity with, you know, my constituency, my neighbors. They're like, will this lower my price, you know, my value of my home? And there, there might be people moving out of Atherton as a result of this change of dynamics and.
Well, they're gonna go to a place that's, they're gonna go to a place that's much more dense. Yeah. So that's the.
Is there anywhere else more than?
Oh, but yeah, there's a lot of density of choices that's, it's preserving this, it's the hard part. Particularly the way it's gone.
Uh, but I'm, but I'm thinking this might be a cyclical thing every year. They're gonna add more housing density issue. There's gonna be more older people moving out. Be more and more density in Atherton and it will change the character, but you know, that's, well, I guess we'll move to Texas or Florida in the future.
Yeah. Uh, Nancy, Nancy, did you have anything that you wanted to uh, to either uh, ask questions of or make a comment on? You might be on mute. I'll come back to you if you, if you get yourself off. I see you're on mute, Nancy. Uh, she, maybe her phone dropped out. Uh, I see her, I see her here on, on the, on the, on the bar. She was having problems with her, with her microphone on her, on her computer. So I still see she's logged in and can hear us, but her phone doesn't seem to be here. Um, and uh, Randy, do you have any comments or or questions? I guess not. All right, let, let me, let me close by saying, first of all, thank you all for, for coming. And uh, thank you all who are still standing in this meeting, so I appreciate that. Uh, and uh, and and I really do want to thank you for being great neighbors in terms of the approach, resident city neighbors as well as Atherton neighbors. The approach of this meeting, I, you know, I've been on this, like I said, the, on this planning commission for three months short of ten years. I've been on two other planning commissions in the East Bay, the county and a town. Um, so seventeen years of planning commission, nine years on the, on a school board and um, there, the number of times that we've had uh, uh, topics come before us, this volatile and those twenty six years or whatever it is. And have this professional and thoughtful uh, presentation uh, is very rare. So uh, I, it would be, it would be a model that I wish we could use in the nation. So I just want to, I just want to uh, congratulate you all for great democracy. And uh, and we want to keep it that way. Um, couple of things, you know, my dad, my dad went to Hastings in the sixties and I was, I was young and and we used to have a nineteen sixty Plymouth Valiant and the only thing we could afford to do was go for a drive on the weekend. And we used to drive down here to where all the rich folks lived. And we drove through all the neighborhoods around Atherton and Palo Alto. And we looked at all these houses. I live in one of those houses uh, that we drove by. Um, and just for the record, I married into it, but that, you know, that's a separate story. But the, but the idea is that uh, this community has been developed to attract um, and and sought out by a, a, a lot of people. And it, and, and we have the features people want. We got beautiful homes, nice yards, trees, peaceful neighborhoods. All in the middle of a, of a very thriving Bay area. I think we have the right and the ongoing responsibility to provide this type of housing option for the entire area. That's, that's some, it's a choice that people want. Uh, the new state mandates, uh, development targets threaten that model in a way that I personally believe uh, as not only bad planning, but poor development model for this community. Housing density doesn't nearly, doesn't necessarily solve a four, but create affordability. Uh, or or nor does it uh, uh, make better housing. Just look at the New York apartments, so a hundred and thirty square feet, they rent for four thousand dollars a month. Um, and then there's all kinds of examples, whether it's Los Angeles, Hong Kong, Singapore, where density didn't solve the affordability problem. Uh, so what we've got to do is that we need to keep on getting input from people, keep on thinking about solutions. What, uh, we've got a defined timeline where uh, that there's a big hammer that we don't want to run into. And we've got a chance to uh, come up with a solution that meets our needs as a community and complies with the state, and I think we can do it. And this, I'm more hopeful now than I was coming into this meeting. Because I, I, I'm so happy that we're approaching this way, both as Redwood City neighbors as well as neighbors within Atherton. We want to find a solution that makes a great community. And uh, and we're gonna do that and just keeping that conversation going, making sure that uh, people know that they're heard, that they're read, that they're listened to. Uh, we may not be able to do everything that people want for sure, and that in twenty six years, I know that's the case. But I know that if we do it the right way, we can come up with a solution that we feel we can live with and doesn't hurt our community. So with that, uh, I'd, uh, I'd like to, if there's no other comments from the, from board members, I'd like to go ahead to uh, to go ahead to the next item on the agenda and keep, and knowing that for all of you that we're gonna keep the door open for input and that we're still listening and taking ideas. Um, and uh, I for one think this is, that this direction is the wrong way to go, that the state is mandated. Peanut butter planning is not good planning. Um, I for one am committed to come up with a way to keep Atherton feeling like Atherton and still provide more housing. Uh, that's why I would go back to the comment about incentivizing uh, the use of lot splits and uh, dues. If we get that number high enough, we can, we can reduce the density. Definitely, I am not in favor of uh, putting the density uh, on Oakwood that is proposed. Uh, I think we could cut that, I think we can cut that uh, number down. And yes, it cuts into whatever cushion we made, but it, it preserves the uh, an option for us to have a, to have a great community. We can, we can take units out of that unit specifically. I also agree that uh, uh, Atherton Avenue is too busy now and I drive up it, I, I'm always, it's, it's like a driver's test between the kids that come out of nowhere and the parent and the, the traffic that goes, goes from nowhere and the, and the, the turn, the turning that stops the traffic flow behind and wraps around the corners. We've got to make sure that we're uh, we're analyzing the, the effect on the safety of our community as well as the livelihood. Uh, so I, I think we've really got to, we've got to do that. Um, so with that, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and close this part of the, of the item off and go to the next item on the agenda. Which is staff reports. We just had a meeting last night of the regular planning commission, so there, um, there and there was, there was a, a short staff report, but Lisa, you might, maybe you can re-highlight again what the next steps are and how people can be involved in that.
For the housing element, we're open to receiving comments. You can email those in um, through July eleventh and then we'll be taking all of those comments to the city council on July twentieth to receive their direction. Making any necessary revisions to the document, hoping to uh, discuss again with the city council on July twenty seventh. And then um, transmit the draft element to H C D and then they'll have ninety days to review it. Once we receive their comments, we'll make some revisions. Um, and then take it forward for adoption hearings.
All right, so it's important that uh, that you get the input. Another thing is happening with this input is uh, the state is getting feedback loud and clear that this is a, this is a challenging thing for all cities and 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 neighborhoods and individuals in the neighborhood. So it, the, the, the feedback counts. I mean, you know, uh, when I was, I was sending you information to uh, uh, the governor uh, during his campaign saying, hey, this is, this, this, this uh, in S B nine are two big mistakes in terms of the way that we're approaching our planning. Retrofitting, bad planning into communities is not the way to go. Um, I meant it and uh, you know, I, sometimes I think that that and five bucks gets you coffee at Starbucks, but I know that our voices coming forward over time is gonna make a difference. So uh, with that, uh, are there any commissioner reports? I'm gonna go to item five, commissioner reports. I don't have anything. Anybody have any reports for the commission? Hearing done. Thank you all again for coming. Thank you all for staying. Uh, uh, your hourly rate is not, 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 it's not a good one for this meeting, but we really appreciate it. I just to let you feel better about it, our hourly rate is the same. Uh, so we're all volunteers on this process, so we appreciate it. Uh, I needed a motion to adjourn this meeting and uh, and continue the conversation. I'll move that we adjourn the meeting. Guys, our second.
Perry, Perry seconds.
All right, Perry seconds. Can I have a roll call, please? Stephanie, are you doing the roll calls?
I think Stephanie had to drop off.
Okay, good.
Charlene?
Yes.
Commissioner Narantek?
Yes.
Mr. Kons? Commissioner Lerner? Commissioner Lamb?
I think you lost your form a little bit ago.
I think we've, we've adjourned due to a lack of a quorum.
Anything we can do to help. All right, everybody have a great weekend and uh, and uh, hope everything is good. Uh, uh, and your neighborhood, it is in mine, so thank, we'll keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye bye.